Uh-oh, alright. Is Melissa is crying?
I don't know, I guess they're like down to the cafe.
It'll take me five minutes to get my.
Supposed to be coming, I guess. Restaurants. Meaning closed.
They're ready.
It's tight. Good evening. I'd like to declare a quorum, call the meeting to order of the February 3rd, 2015 Board of Education. We have a very special guest with us this evening who's going to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Mason, would you like to come forward to the microphone? I think we've adjusted it to fit you. Okay, wait till we're all up. And it's all yours, Mason.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mason. Ina, we follow directions quite well, thank you. Mason is a student at Funkstown Elementary and I believe you brought some of your own special guests with you tonight. Would you introduce your guest? Can you come up to the mic and do that all over again for us so we're sure we can hear it?
That is my mom and that's Ms. Kaufman from my school. Well, she is the principal.
I love it. Mrs. Lewis, welcome, Ms. Kaufman, thank you very much. Mason, you seem very retiring and shy, so if you have any problems with the questions, I'll repeat them. But what do you like best about Funkstown Elementary?
Well, I do like the games that my class plays. And we've played, well, first... We have played spell, I mean shake and spill.
Shake and spill?
Yep, shake and spill.
Spell, oh, okay, so you like spelling?
Yeah.
Yay, good for you. If you were a principal for a day, is there something you would change about the school?
Well, if someone landed on red, I would have to take them to my office and have a little bit of a talk.
I think that's a perfect answer. Thank you, Mason, so much for coming. Thank you. I love it. Any other guests that my colleagues would like to introduce? Thank you, Mason. I'm looking for an approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as recommended by the Agenda Planning Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Harding's. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Discussion on the agenda. I will just give everyone a heads up that we have a hard stop at 3:15. We have a joint meeting scheduled with the Board of County Commissioners at 3:30, so we would need to stop exactly at 3:15. If we do not complete our business agenda, there's a couple options. One is to recess and reconvene, or we can postpone and pick up the remaining agenda items on February 17th. So if we get to that point, I would encourage a motion from someone in one of those directions, depending on the time. Approval of the minutes.
Yes, Madam President, I move for approval of the minutes of the closed session of Tuesday, January 20th, 2015, and the business meeting minutes for that same day, Tuesday, January 20th, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Any discussion on the minutes?
Madam President, I will be abstaining because I was absent.
Very good, thank you. Any other discussion? The question is on the approval of the minutes. All those in favor? Okay, so we have six in favor, the student concurs, and Mrs. Fisher abstains. Alright, no one has signed up for public comment, but since we have suspended our policy on the requirement to sign up, is there anyone here who would like to address the board tonight, this afternoon? Alright, seeing no one, we have old business, none new business, and we're right into the superintendent's report. Dr. Wilcox?
Thank you. It's my pleasure today to introduce some outstanding young athletes who are also scholars. And so with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Wright to come forward, and I'm going to ask the board members if you'll come forward and help us recognize these student athletes who have recently won a state volleyball championship. These are the young ladies from Smithsburg High School, so please come forward.
As the board members assemble, for those watching and those here in the audience with us today, we are privileged, as Dr. Wilcox said, to finally have the Smithsburg volleyball team here. The first time we tried this, there was an academic interference in the schedule, and the second time, the snow handed us a closing for that day. So we're happy to finally recognize this team. Peyton Billela. Marissa Dangler. Lauren Daniels. Holly Winders. Megan Moran. Alexis Spickler. Elena Black. Brianna Hall. Julia Pepper. Sarah Heatherington. Madison Bakedel. Haley Bakedel. Probably attached to somebody else's. Brielle Winders. The team managers, Abigail Shives. Taylor Hamilton. Josie Snyder. Head coach Rachel Bruschier. Manager Bill Haas and assistant coach Rose Powell could not be with us today, but we congratulate them as well. Before we send them back to school, which is I assume where they're going, we did want to recognize their academic performance off the court. The team has an average team GPA of 3.8. Congratulations.
As we continue on with the report, one of the things that we're going to speak to you about today is the Annual Citizens Advisory Committee Council Meeting, actually. Jamie Hade has been the administrative lead on this position, and I'm going to turn this policy, this presentation now over to Jamie. Jamie, if you would talk to us, please. Thank you.
And Jamie, please introduce your guest, thank you.
Introduce my guest today, Ms. Jennifer Ashbaugh, and she is a representative on the Citizens Advisory Committee of Cascade Elementary, and she was quick to tell me also Smithsburg Middle School. So we want to make sure we know that. Also, we are very fortunate, she's playing kind of a dual roles. She is also a teacher, a math teacher, at Northern Middle School, so we are very fortunate. Just a quick update with the annual report for the Citizens Advisory Committee. We have, when Dr. Marco departed from us, I, Dr. Wilcox asked me to step in and take over the committee. And we looked at the schedule and they were meeting every month. So we were like, okay, let's look at this and change it to a quarterly meeting. Because basically every month, it turned out that there were only two citizens coming in and actually working. So this was a very small group, and they were trying to get things accomplished and they couldn't. We've changed it to quarterly meetings. We're very fortunate to have 10-plus people coming to our meetings now. So we have improved the participation. And it's community members, teachers, we're very fortunate to have teachers, and we also have lots of parents that are coming in and working with us. Now, just saying, we say quarterly meetings, if an issue arises, we have, as a committee, as a group, we have talked about, we will set up additional meetings if something arises or a concern comes up, so it's not just quarterly, we can adjust that. Also, email has made it a lot easier to, and more effective for the committee. What the superintendent has requested really gave us a vision to look at what we know as Social Sentinel. The tech, I'm sorry, the Facebook, looking at the different applications within the schools. So the committee, the community, the Citizen Advisory Committee, what they have done, what we have done is we have actually looked at the Social Sentinel, we have discussed it, we've reviewed documentation. Our next meeting, we're actually going to go into the program, and we are going to look at detailed, everything in the detail, looking at what we, the surrounding of the schools, we are going to eventually, our goal is, to look at those key words that we've spoken of before, and maybe adjust those, and use the committee's input to adjust those words add to the words. So the Social Sentinel is going to be an ongoing, every quarter when we meet, we will be updating those and looking at different things that way. So we have lots and lots of discussions on Social Sentinel, and I think that the committee has become, has very much of an understanding now. And they have, we have looked at it, and a lot of, I saw a lot of relief when they, when I started going in and really explaining it in detail. But as we, as we were talking about Social Sentinel and what Dr. Wilcox asked us to do, there was still a lot of chatter, lots and lots of chatter that we discussed, and it was about Common Core. We looked at it and we talked about Common Core, and the parents, a lot of the parents on the board or on our committee, they were like, well, we need to really look at this because my child is coming home and I don't know how to help them with math. I don't know how to help them with their homework. It's not what it was when I was in school. So we really talked about it, and we have formed a second goal. And with the discussions, and I've been working and talking with the Curriculum Department, we are going to, when we launch our new website in May, we are putting together, and the whole committee is working together, we are putting together a parent portal. This parent portal will consist of standards from the Common Core and small little video clips, no more than three minutes, for each standard. So parents can actually, if they're not really sure about a homework, every homework that comes home should have standards associated with it. They can go online to our WCPS website, they're going to be able to click on math, and they're going to be able to find the standard, watch a very short video of one of our own teachers teaching that, again, three minutes or less. And they're also, we are also going to attach documentation to that. So they're going to be able to see something worked out, read it, and watch it. So as a committee, as a group, we are getting together and we are working with, we are going to start with math because that seems to be the difficult issue that everyone is bringing up, and we have a math expert to help us on there also. So we are going to work, start with math, and then we're going to move through the other content areas to build these videos. The math department is currently setting up schedules to go out and videotape teachers throughout our county in those three to four-minute presentations. So our goal, coming up in May, when we launch our website, we will have a parent portal. It will not have every standard. In the beginning, we will slowly beginning, slowly adding those, but all those major standards that are the long division and different things like that, we are going to make sure they're right away, they're ready to go. So we are, we are proud of the parent portal and we are getting excited, and this whole committee has really, really gotten behind this and are ready to go. And just some future topics that we started talking about. So we have Social Sentinel, we're really working with the parent portal with the Curriculum Department. Some, some future topics that we, we've, as a group discussed, will be the Standards-Based Report Card. They would like, as a group, so they can go back to their schools and talk to other parents, they would like to gain some additional knowledge about this, especially the rubric, the elementary rubric, that 1, 2, 3, 4, they would like, that whole system, they would like additional information. So we're going to bring in the Report Card Committee, and they're actually going to come in and talk to the committee and look through different things and just try to ask questions and try to get some understandings, again, so they can go back and talk about it. A lot of times, communication is an issue, just with, from school to parents, from the county or central office to parents. So we're going to bring Richard Wright in the Communications Office in, we're going to talk about that. Especially the big topic at the last meeting was the delay cancellation, the Hancock Zone, the Clear Spring Zone, the, or I'm sorry, the Cascade Zone. So we're discussing that with Mr. Wright, and we're going to work through that. So at this time, again, that was a quick overview of what we are doing, but I think we're doing quite a bit and we're very excited about it. We're asking if you have any questions, or if you would like us to look at a direction to go in.
Maybe Mrs. Ashbaugh would like to.
And she, absolutely.
Would you like to make some comments on some of these initiatives?
Bring up the report card thing, situation, wanting to delve more into that and understanding is some of our not being, the parent view isn't in sync with the report cards and it causes a lot of confusion. So a lot of our different feedback from the different schools brought up that concern and that, aside from not necessarily understanding the standards, just trying to have everything kind of make sense and kind of mesh together better, that was kind of where that evolved from as well. I know since we brought up the different attendance zones ourselves, as far as the snow and delay, snow days and delay days, I know Smithsburg Middle, I can speak for them, have actually sent home a clarification letter with the students, assuming the students actually took it home to their parents, but that has actually improved. So, you know, kudos to all those that were involved in that, but, you know, we do, it is important to get that out there more, and we're, as a, as our committee, are trying to get more of the communication and in two-way communication going. And it really has been great having them, people approach us as well as having, getting some answers and having some tasks. I think that has made a difference as well. I think in the past, CAC hasn't felt like we had much to do, and now we actually feel like we have a purpose, so, so that's actually really nice.
Excellent. Questions, anyone? Ms. Harshman?
Since you mentioned the report cards, I've had some phone calls about the apparent misunderstanding in the report cards, and some schools are not giving fours, period, for any reason unless the students are above grade level and it's in the curriculum. Have you heard anything from the parents about that?
From a parent perspective?
Or teachers?
Well, and I teach middle school, so I'm talking from a parent perspective. We, it has been explained to us during parent conferences or what have you that students are, they visit fours, they don't live with fours, they visit fours. And one of the concerns that we had brought up at the meeting was, does that make it more dependent upon the teacher? Like, is it more subjective to be able to get a four in the sense that the teacher then has to go above and beyond to give that enrichment of the next grade level to get them to a four? And that's part of what we didn't, we don't understand, and that's why we've requested.
That's what I, that's exactly what I understood, that the teacher then was responsible for going a grade level above, finding the standards for that grade level, and moving them into her or his lesson plans. And if it did not show up there, no student, now this is some schools, others apparently were not given the same instructions, but could not have fours. So there are some schools in the county that there are no fours, and there are some schools that there are.
Well, and I think that's partly why we had, and we, that even within our committee, so that's why we had reflected.
Yes, and there does seem to be a great bit of confusion about that. Good.
Anyone?
I would just like to ask a question about membership drive, how, even though you have now a great contingency of parents and teachers, more is always better in this case, so I'm just wondering if there's an outreach to the principals, to the local PTAs, to PTOs, to CACs on the local level to, to encourage participation or get that information out, so.
Our committee, actually, are, all of our, the participants, we've, we're taught, it is open, anyone can come and join us. And they're going back to their schools and letting everyone know that they, anyone can come and join us as a community member. We are sending out to principals, principals receive emails, they receive all the minutes also, which will help them. Please, we're constantly saying, please look, if you see anyone that you know that would be a great member that would like to come and join us, and they give them my information, and we take care of them, bring them onto the group, onto the committee.
And the committee members have been recommended by the principals or for whatever reason?
I was just wanting to be sure we had as many areas of the county covered and people were aware of this.
We have, we have a, we have one person from each school, and we receive if they, if they can't make it to the meeting, this is because I'm not back there.
You can't be in two places at once.
Look behind you, Richard's like saying something to you right now.
We have one participant from, from each school. We, they fill out, if they can't make it to the meeting, they fill out a form with ever, all the information, and we actually sit and we review all of those forms and discuss those, because it helps, actually, it helps other schools and other members of our committee.
And it's not just complaints or problems at schools, it's also talking about positive things that are going on.
Good news.
Share that amongst ourselves, and so it's actually very nice because we, a number of us have gotten different ideas from other schools that we can take back to our schools then, and so it really is a nice way to share out in a different way some, some good, positive things that are going on.
Some networking opportunities there. Great. I appreciate it. If my colleagues have no other questions, Dr. Wilcox, any comments since it's under your report?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Akram. Thank you. The next item is a report on the, from the West City Elementary School Naming Committee. Mr. Wright, who is our communications officer and the staff liaison to the naming committee, is going to come forward, and I believe he has some folks with him who he'll introduce.
Good afternoon, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. Today we bring forward the recommendations from the West City Naming Committee. I have the privilege to introduce to you Linda Irving Craig, who's on my left-hand side, many of you know her, perhaps all of you do. Linda's the current director of the Washington County Historical Society, and she once sat in the seats where you all sit today from 1982 to 1986, and we thank her for that service as well as the service on this committee. And to my right is a math teacher from Western Heights Middle School, Nate Hirsch, who also part of our committee. The total committee of 15 people obviously could not be here today, these were the two victims that I was able to bring forward, and they were more than willing to share their comments. As I mentioned, it's an informational-only presentation for those watching or listening, this, there is no action that's being asked of the board today. All the information that was placed on board docs and shared at the last meeting is simply being shared to you today as part of the formal process of naming a school. Dr. Wilcox mentioned at our last business meeting, the names that were brought forward from the committee, and I'll just review very briefly the process that got us there, and then we'll review those names one more time, and then I'll ask the committee members who are here to share any thoughts that they might have about their experience and other things that I may miss. So as mentioned before, this is in accordance with policy, Board of Education policy FF, which is the naming and renaming of facilities and granting of naming rights. This 15-person committee convened for the first time in mid-November. We had three meetings total, in addition to many online discussions through Google Docs, email, et cetera, and other random conversations via phone. We had, we were fortunate to have several teachers, several parents, and the committee members' names are listed on the report to the board that you should have in front of you. Very pleased that we were able to get a good mix of teachers and family members from the community as well. One thing I think we would all share that we learned in this process is that there's no end to the list of possibilities for the name, name of a school. We certainly discussed probably in excess of 50 or 75 options, and then, like any committee, trying to bring it down to a manageable group of names to bring forward to you was exciting and challenging at the same time. And so without going into great detail, the names that the committee brought forward, and no. in no particular order, were Hager's Crossing Elementary, Jonathan Hager Elementary. Both of those names, I think, have very distinct historic value for the land where the school is to be built, which is a former home site, or land that was owned by Jonathan Hager, the founder of Hagerstown. Founders Elementary, again, is very similar to honoring Jonathan Hager, the committee felt that this would be a way to honor the founders of all of the municipalities and communities in Washington County. Crossroads Elementary, we had had lengthy discussions about the number of roads that cross 81 and 70, and 81 and 40, and just, I mean, there are, there are lots of crossroads, Hewitts, and the list goes on, and the community just felt like that, or the committee felt like that would be a name that would sort of resonate as, this is a place where everybody can come to, it's really, and because we were bringing many schools, or several schools together, we thought that was a unique name for the area. And then finally, Spring House Elementary, which, if you're not familiar with the property out there, as you turn off of the, sort of the shopping mall road, the name escapes me, I'm sorry, right now, but there is an old spring house that sits on the farmland there that, before Hager's Crossing Community and the school were even in prob, in thought. But there are many generations of farmers that would have used that spring house, it was a significant, sort of geographical icon of that area, and so, to come up with something that was maybe more neutral in naming, the committee, we went back and forth on the separation of Spring and House, and Spring House, and, like I said, there's no end to the list of options for naming. And so, those are the five names that the committee brings forward for the board's consideration at a later date, and I will turn it over to the committee members, if they have any additional comments they'd like to make. Linda, would you care?
Well, first of all, I want to commend you all of the process. I think it's been a remarkable group to work with. Never been terribly fond or a fan of not naming schools for compass points, so it's great that we're looking at, at doing something different this time, with the school. We did spend a lot of time, it was great working with parents and student, and we actually had students, although they did not attend the meeting per se, we did have involvement from students in this process. The mention of the spring, I was charged with trying to find a name for the spring that exists there on the property. It has a number, I didn't think you wanted to use a number. We checked all the historic maps and could not find anything, but that was one of the, one of the reasons that the spring came into play. But again, I want to thank you for allowing me to participate in this. It's been very enjoyable, both to represent the Historical Society as a member of the committee, and also to re-engage a little bit with some of my roots in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wanted to say that I, I really found the process very rewarding, getting to work collaboratively with lots of people who were, had a vested interest in the naming of the school, and we had lots of very good conversations about possible names, and I just appreciate the opportunity to serve on the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Mr. Wright, I know when Dr. Wilcox mentioned this at our last meeting, and I think there was an article in the Herald Mail, have we gotten any subsequent name choices, responses, anything from that article, any feedback at all, anything we should be updated on?
Our office, and as far as I know, no staff members have received any direct feedback about the names that were mentioned after the last business meeting.
In the newspaper article.
That's correct.
Okay, good. So, at this point, Dr. Wilcox, I believe this report comes to us, and then we need to make a decision how to act upon it. My suggestion, recommendation would be to place this on a future agenda item, if, agenda, which I would think would be February 17th, depending on what else we already have on that agenda. Is there any discussion on this recommendation? I think we have the information, and if that process, it'll bring it before us, we'll have discussion at that point and vote on it. Do you need any further information to make this decision in preparation for that? Any questions to the committee?
Good.
Dr. Harding's?
Did the, so you presented us with the five names, did the committee have a preference?
I don't think that there was a...
No, okay.
Yeah.
I think overall, as a committee, there were individuals or factions of the committee that maybe had a preference.
Different preferences.
We tried to present the fairest overall presentation of the names, and, without being biased by one small group or another.
I appreciate that effort that you made to make sure that it came sort of clean and objective. To anybody who might be watching, this, I mean, this would be the opportunity to provide input, if anybody has some, I know we received some before the process, that I think we passed along to the committee, and if anybody has any more now, based on the, sort of the five finalists, I would invite anybody to let us know between now and whenever it is that we can schedule this. And I too want to thank the members of the committee, the two of you, and of course, the other members that you represent who couldn't be here.
As a superintendent, I also want to thank you. Linda, thank you so much for your service. I know we talked about this one evening, and you jumped right into action, so thank you for helping Richard and the team. Nate, thank you very much. As a teacher, I think you bring a valuable insight to the process, and so I want to say thank you to you, but also to all of your committee members for bringing the board five very viable choices. I think the only thing that Richard has left to do is, maybe under separate cover sometime, talk to you about what the students think, and he's got some of that information that he'll forward to you as well.
So, that could come to us before we... Thank you.
Thank you all.
And superintendent's update?
So, there are a couple of things that I want to share with the community and with the board this evening. The first is, I have followed up, working with our security officer, Steve Ganley, to some questions that were raised by Mr. Gessford at our last board meeting. We have begun the review of our security protocols for this meeting, particularly when there is a board meeting in place. One of the things that we looked at early, early on were, what are the internal processes that we could do that did not cost money, that did not raise alarm, but simply would be a matter of good practice? We went back and reviewed this entire building, in fact, because quite honestly, when we moved here, we've been here just now, actually, a year on February 8th, so it's, our anniversary date is coming up. We had talked about some internal security rooms for employees in the room, but we never really thought clearly through the board, and the board's role in this building. And so, one of the first things that we got to is, we can better utilize the existing locking system. We have secure doors in the front of the building, and we have a receptionist there, we can extend the receptionist hours in the evening, keep board doors locked, let people come in and actually sign in, as they do during any other business meeting of the day. It's not an obtrusive process, but it also gives us an ample opportunity to put an extra eyeball on people to see whether or not they're coming in with perhaps some anger on their face, where we could perhaps try to consult them outside of the process before they got here to the board, or try to alleviate some of their concerns. We also have thought about then, when we see a situation developing, how do we best address that? One of the things that we, you all should know is that Mr. Ganley is a former police officer, he has a deep background in law enforcement, and he's in this building during your day meetings. In addition to that, oftentimes, he has meetings of our law enforcement partners, he's going to think more to the scheduling of those meetings, so that they're here, perhaps with a marked unit that sits outside, that sometimes sits as a deterrent to people who might want to do harm. We have looked at then internally, after upgrading those security processes, saying, well, what are the egress points for the board? How do you, how would you leave here? We've talked about changing some locking systems in this room, so that if you left the DS and went into that room, that would be secured, so that if somebody were out to just be angry, and maybe just even want to be abusive in terms of tone, or something, we could step away from that for a moment. So, we've thought about things that I think are good, common sense solutions to some of the concerns that were raised. We've also looked at some things in case there was a more dramatic event. We've looked at, you know, what would happen if someone came in as an armed shooter? We want to talk about those kinds of things, but we don't want to talk about them in a sense that we give away all of our responses. So, we're continuing to work on that, I'll upgrade, or update the board as we get further along with those conversations. But we've done a lot of brainstorming, a lot of headaching, thinking about, well, what if somebody came in this room, and you had to literally crawl out of this room because somebody was out there doing something? You know, what would protect you beyond the DS and the wood that's involved in this? And we've thought about that kind of thing. We've thought about, you know, what about creating that secure kind of panic room, if you will? And again, I'll talk to the board more of that, we've had a lot of good conversation, and I want to thank the board for bringing the issue to us, because quite honestly, it gave us a chance to review our other security processes in the building. So, thank you, and that concludes that portion of my report, but I do have a couple of other things, if I may, Madam President, if there's not discussion.
Could I pause a moment, Mr. Gessford? Does that address...
Yes.
...adequately?
Absolutely.
And I think the understanding that some of these items would be best discussed in a closed session. Any other discussion or response? Back to you.
Thank you all. This past Friday, it was my pleasure to attend an event that was hosted by Greater Hagerstown and the Greater Hagerstown Committee. It was called Cradle to Career, an education summit, where we talked about how we can best align this community's resources to better serve young people. I simply wanted to point that out to the board and tell you that in your Friday update, for those of you who weren't there, you'll get a copy of the materials that were presented. I think it is important that this board be an active participant in that, and quite honestly, I think it's important for the community to recognize all the things that we're already doing that support many of the issues that were raised in the Cradle to Career Education Summit. So, I simply say that as an update to the board members who weren't able to be there. You will get these materials, and certainly, I'd welcome your comments. Another thing that I want to share with you is that the board is going to announce, I think, a fairly important initiative, and that is related to the Microsoft partnership that's being established in the state of Maryland. Mr. Wright is going to be, our public information officer is going to be preparing some press releases, but quite honestly, here's what we have. We met with the Microsoft folks earlier this week, and as part of their statewide initiative, every student in this district will have access to the Microsoft tools that most of us have become very familiar with, and they'll not only have an access for their device, but they'll have accesses for up to four additional devices that their family owns. So, we think it's really important that these young people have access to Microsoft Word, PowerPoint, some of the other communications tools that are in there, Excel as a spreadsheet, because we think that, quite honestly, it helps to go towards making a student a more literate 21st century young person. We also think it will help many families across this community with that expense. In addition to that, Microsoft is going to make available to us a free subscription to become a Microsoft Academy, and we're looking at a couple of schools right now that might want to really take this next step, where the young people who participate in the academy become Microsoft certified. We think that will be a tremendous opportunity for those young people as they enter the world of work, to be able to demonstrate that they have these Microsoft skills means that there's less training dollars that a company has to allocate towards that young person as they hire them, and quite honestly, it says to the company that they are a much more productive member of the employment team. Beyond that, Microsoft is committed to bringing to the district to help our young people and our teachers with professional development related to the Microsoft tools. So, we're very excited about this partnership that we will soon be launching, and again, I would simply say to all of you and to our community, to please look for this communication that Mr. Wright is going to be getting out in the next couple of weeks. We're, again, very excited. There's even a possibility of a kind of a fun little thing, although we're a little nervous here about it, because they say that if you do Bing searches, many of you use search engines, and if you convert all of your devices to Bing, they have a way to know that you've used Bing in the search, and after so many searches, they'll award free tablets to the school district based on that surface tablets. Now, we're probably not going to go there, but I just thought, isn't it interesting how technology companies are trying to build brand loyalty? That said, I've got one other item that I want to share with the board today, and that is simply this, is that I hope all of you will take time out of your busy schedules this weekend to attend the FASPA Frenzy, which is going on at the mall. Once again, Greater Hagerstown, but in particular, Mitesh Khatari and Jeannie Singer have organized a day where all of our young people can go to the mall, meet with guidance counselors from this district, career advisors, and admissions counselors from the colleges and universities in this area, and complete the FASPA form. That form is the key to getting access to college and university, because that form determines your eligible, eligibility for financial aid from the federal government. So, we're hopeful that not only hundreds of our students will go, but we're hopeful that many of you as adults will go to lend your support to the great work that's being done on behalf of our kids, by not just our own employees, not just by our board, but by this larger community. And with that, I would encourage you to be out there on the 7th and 8th, that's Saturday and Sunday at the Valley Mall, and then the following weekend, we're going to take a weekend off, but we're going to come back, I believe, on the 21st and 22nd, and do it all again for another group of kids. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox, and I'll remind my colleagues that the event calendar that we keep has those two weekends listed on that, if there's any confusion. All right, we're going to move on to personnel action.
Mrs. Brightman, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board, as discussed earlier, in closed session, there are several personnel actions for your review this afternoon.
Thank you. Looking for a motion on personnel actions?
Madam President, I move for the approval of personnel actions as recommended by staff.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. So, second? Oh, second. Thank you. Mrs. Fisher? Discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
7-1. Thank you.
Thank you.
7-1. What did I say? 7-0. Oh, gosh. And the student member abstained.
There you go.
Thank you. All right, reports to the board. Welcome, Ms. Brandenburg and Ms. Burhans.
Good afternoon, President Brightman, Dr. Wilcox, and members of the board. Of course. So, we're delighted to be here with you this afternoon to talk a little bit about preparations for park assessment. As I'm sure you know, the math team works tirelessly to develop resources and materials to empower our teachers to teach the Maryland Career College Readiness Standards. And in part of that effort, all of our curriculum teachers are, have been master teachers at the Career and College Readiness Conference. Mrs. Brandenburg was a master teacher this past year at the Career College Readiness Conference, and one of the, well, the session she facilitated was based on looking at the park assessment, and then looking at what are the implications for instruction. So, one of the strategies that we promote the use of and work with teachers on using in classrooms is called a three-act lesson. So, and when we talk about how we support that instruction in classrooms, we talk about learning on the diagonal, and some of you may remember this graphic from a couple, a couple of years ago, when we were talking about park assessments. In our math classrooms, we really want to make sure that students are not only understanding the content, but that they're able to apply that content and to be critical problem solvers. So, those habits of mind, we call them the math practices in math classrooms, but we have them in all of our classrooms, they're the 21st century thinking skills, and then the content knowledge. So, we want a balance of that in our math classrooms. So, Mrs. Brandenburg's going to talk to you about what that looks like in a three-act lesson.
Yeah, I'm going to talk a little bit about three-act lessons. Teachers during the summer session really realized how important it was that students be able to apply those mathematical concepts to real-world situations. This three-act lesson strategy came from Dan Meyer, who's a fellow doctoral candidate right now at Stanford, finishing up his fellowship on, with teacher knowledge and preparation, and this was his brainchild. And it started in secondary classrooms, because he was a high school math teacher originally, and it has kind of filtered down to the lower grades, because we have seen how it can be applied even at our level. So, I'm going to give you a brief overview of what a three-act lesson is, because this is something that teachers realize can really help students be prepared for real-world mathematics. Three-act lesson is just that, it's a lesson in three acts. The first act is where we bait kids in, we really get them curious about the mathematics they're doing, to get them questioning what they see. And then in Act Two, students with the teacher's help are figuring out, well, what tools do I need to solve this problem? Instead of waiting for a teacher to say, well, use this, and use this tool, and use... We want kids to start thinking about, with teacher's help, what tools might be appropriate for the particular problem-solving situation. Those tools can be simple things, like pencil and paper, they may be manipulatives, they may, there may be some information they need to go to the web and to find in order to solve the problem. We want kids to start thinking about those things. Also, in Act Two, they're estimating, and they're working together to actually solve that problem, and we do a lot of that cooperatively. So important to see how different kids come at problems and solve them in different ways. Then Act Three, everybody loves a good resolution in a movie. Well, that's what Act Three does in a math, in the three-act math lesson. Act Three brings the solution, and then a way that that can be solved. So, we're going to show you a sample. Now, some of these three-act lessons we can find on the web. Many of them, our team has created, and now... Many of them, our team has created, and now the teachers in Washington County are starting to create them for themselves. This particular three-act lesson we're going to show you is one that came from a teacher idea. I had a teacher call me. She said, "I want to do a three-act lesson where I have the kids thinking about a bike path at the battlefield. Can you help me do that?" So, I did. One thing we also provide to our students, our teachers, and I'll share this with you before I show you the lesson that was created. This is a basic graphing organizer that kind of leads through the three-act lesson structure. So, really, the only thing teachers need to get this lesson kind of started. First act, you'll see kids are looking at the problem. What did they notice? What did they wonder? The class comes up with that central question they're going to ask about that particular situation, and then they're estimating. So, let's look at Act One. This is what we created for this, for our county, for the Antietam Bike Ride. Ooh. There's some reason I don't think that played correctly. This one, I think it must have gotten shortened. At any rate, the real video, that was just a piece. I don't know what happened with that. It says their bike ride last is, starts and begins at the visitor center. And so, they see that at the end. For some reason, I got cut off. I'm not sure why. But, that's okay. So, kids will see at the end of that one minute that it says, "A bike ride starts and ends at the visitor center." So, then the kids have a discussion about, well, how could we figure out how long that bike ride is? And they talk about what kind of tools do they need? And some of the tools that the students came up with when they solved this problem were, "We're going to need that map." The map isn't good enough just in the video. I need to have the map in front of me. We need a ruler. So, they gather those tools. They also learn about the scale of this particular map and how to use that with their measuring skills. And then Act Three, hopefully this is the right one, is going to play the answer once they've had time to work through it. So, let's see if the Act Three will play. But these videos are meant to be really short, because we don't want to spend a whole lot of time in the video. We want to spend most of our time in the problem solving. Is it going to play? If not, it's okay. I know, it worked before. Act Three, in this particular... Oh, we might look out. The nice thing about creating these videos for teachers is they're really learning to use the technology to create these. Okay, there was the scale for this particular one. Now, this is meant to be for very young children, so there are many ways to solve this, but for a second grader, their best bet is probably to measure off the quarter-inch lengths and then count those up in tenths of an inch, so one tenth, two tenths, three tenths, and so forth. Upper-grade students would probably solve this in a different way, and that's okay. So, this is a sample of what they might have done on their map. Now, they could have even chosen a different route. They wouldn't have had to choose that particular one. So, there are many ways to come at this problem and different avenues to explore as well. We provide lots and lots of resources for our teachers on the portal, and we even have a portal page directly related to three-act math lessons. If you scroll down this page, you're going to see a box full of lessons for different levels, all the way from pre-K up to grade five for us, and there are certainly ones for middle school and high school as well. So, what questions do you have?
Questions?
I think one of the things that I wanted to point out today is that when you take a look at this, this really talks about the conversation we were having earlier today, kind of the evolution of teaching and learning as it moves from factual recall. How many segments were there to? Now, how do you apply that? And again, it only happens with great teaching. This isn't just a student-led discovery. It's a great teacher who sets up a scenario that interests the young people, helps them to determine what resources that they need, and then, at least a constructive experience. Certainly, there's room for a bird walk, but I think this is a perfect example of what we're talking about today, about how teaching is learning, how teaching is evolving.
And I think the other thing about this particular lesson is this teacher is partnering with a physical education teacher to look at how many calories that student might have burned on that particular bike ride. So, I thought it was some nice interdisciplinary connections there, so...
And the social studies connection as well.
Yeah. And we go out, teachers will call and say, "Can you come out and help us write our own three-act lesson?" The students really enjoy it when the teachers can create a video and a three-act lesson that relates to their own school. At Bester, we created one recently. We recreated one for them. We have one with egg cartons, and they said, "We love that, but let's make it relate to our kids." So, we rewrote the lesson with them and helped those teachers learn how to do the iMovies to create that, so their kids would be invested in it. And so, it's really exciting. There's been a lot of professional development. Recently, we did a South County, all the South County elementary schools gathered for an afternoon to get a little professional development on creating them, and then they had time, as teachers, to collaborate together to create their own three-act lessons, so...
Question, if I could. This presentation, I assume it was this one or one similar, came to my attention when I was in Annapolis, attending a meeting, and I serve on an ad hoc committee for the College and Career Readiness. And they were, different counties were supposed to bring best practices back to the state-level work group. And our liaison came back to us and was talking rave reviews on Washington County. Do you realize what they're doing? They're going out doing professional development across the state, meeting with different groups and regions. I don't have the exact knowledge of how that all came together, but I got the sense of what happened. And what I heard was that, and we hear a lot about teachers frustrated with the new standards, not knowing how to teach it, feeling overwhelmed, the morale issue, instead of maybe the excitement or looking for the fun. And what I was led to believe is that the reaction, that the teachers were staying longer, they were engaged, they were excited, they were saying, gee, how do I do this? How does this happen? I mean, were you part of that? And can you give us some feedback? I think that's the energy I was hoping to get from this...
Originally, I presented the CERC conference during the summer as, with the park presentation. And that session was an almost-two-hour session where teachers just were able to go in and kind of really take some time to look at those problems that are, the park had released and say, "Okay, based on what we see, what are the classroom practices we should be using?" And then from that, actually, Dr. Smith from this STE had attended our presentation and asked me to come present to one of their committees.
There you go. That's...
And so, we did go present to them about some of the best practices in mathematics and language arts that those teachers came up with during the summer session. And these are some of the types of things they came up with. I think they really felt good during that summer session, because they had time to look at the problems and actually work through them. And what does it take to solve this problem? And then think about, you know, what can I do for kids? And how can I help put the practices in place that they need to be successful? And they just hadn't had a lot of time to do that. It was great that they got to talk with each other. You know, we had people from all over the state in the same room. So, I think that was beneficial to them, and it was empowering. I think they left excited. We had a packed house every session, so...
And I think that's also true, just to dovetail into that. Even in our sessions that we have with teachers in our county, Beth and Mary Ann do a Math Institute that's a year-long course for our teachers, and you'll find our teachers lingering until 5:30 and 6 o'clock. And it's because we have, we have central office lead teachers that are so passionate about what they do, and they love the math and want everyone else to love it too. And just like a good classroom teacher, the kids don't want to leave. That's how the colts are with math. So, I think it's their energy and dynamics and passion for the content that also helps to further that.
I just thought it would be...
And I'm just bragging on them.
Be good to have some good news, some positive and...
Yeah, teachers are really excited about three-act lessons. In fact, I go tomorrow to Bester again to work with first and second grade. They're creating some more lessons, so it's exciting that they're wanting to create their own.
Great.
So, thank you, guys. Great job.
Any other questions at all? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Legislative briefing. Mrs. Cade is making her way up. Here is Mr. Trotta. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I have seen many of you at the MAB Day in Annapolis. Four of your board members were there, along with Dr. Wilcox and Tony Trotta. So, you have had a lot of exposure yourselves in Annapolis, but I'll try to be brief in telling you what I am feeling this session is, how it's going, and a little bit of what is going on. As we all know, new governor, new, a third of the legislators are new. So, there's a time of kind of getting acquainted, and there's an excitement and an optimism and so forth. And for many, that means learning a new language, the language of education, because when you have a third of your membership new and you start talking about GCEI, or MAB, or PASM, or BurFA, or IEPs, or NTIs, that's like a language that is, somebody has to sit down and slowly help legislators understand all those different acronyms and all the different work that comes through each of those. And so, the session has been focused mostly so far really around the budget. And there have been budget briefings in all of the committees, not just in the budget committees, and briefings on other issues. And mostly, the bills have not yet been heard, and there aren't really a huge number of bills yet introduced. So, we are kind of awaiting the big pieces of legislation that we expect to come from the administration or that we know are coming, such bills as the changes in charter schools. And we are hopeful that in that legislation, which we know is coming from either the administration or some of the legislators, that the counties will be kept as the only authorizers and that the changes will more involve personnel issues and so forth. While we were down, Mrs. Brightman and Dr. Hardings and Dr. Wilcox and Tony and I had an interesting discussion with Senator Rosa Pepp, who is one of the people who's very key in dealing with the legislation for charter schools. And it was a very open, very lively, very honest, and informal conversation, and very valuable. And that's really why it's nice when various of you come down and can actually spend some time with legislators. In the burden of proof legislation that would change the burden of proof in IEP disputes from the Board of Education to, I mean, from the family to the Board of Education, I know that the proponents are going around getting legislators to sign on. We met with one the other day who said, "Oh, oh, I just signed on to that legislation. Maybe I shouldn't have." And so, we are hoping, again, in that legislation, that it doesn't cover cases of unilateral placement, that if burden of proof is transferred, that it won't apply in cases where there is unilateral placement, which, as I understand it, is the majority of cases. So, but we, it's not an easy one, and it's not an inexpensive one. So, it's something that we really want to keep watching. The Labor Day start hasn't really gotten...
Started.
Started yet. And we know that that's coming along and that that's going to be a lot of debate, although virtually all school systems start well before Labor Day, or certainly before Labor Day. And, you know, MAB is still taking the position that, you know, this is a local thing. You should be able to allow the schedule to fit with your community and not be told when school should start. This, again, is like a lot of the issues down there, that they want to tell you what to do and when to do it and how to do it. And these are things that your organizations down there really are working to say, no, this is something that should be decided by the local Board of Education, not by the state legislature. We are watching for the bill that would provide tax credits for contributions, business contributions to voucher programs for non-public schools. This is, we call it the boast bill because of one iteration of it from several years ago. And we know that that is coming back in, in some form or other. And we are sort of getting ready for all of these big issues. But meanwhile, of course, there are plenty of issues going on. There's a lot of discussion of the budget and a lot of action on cuts to the education budget. The cuts to budgets were really spread widely. I mean, the governor really took a piece here and a piece there and a piece there, so that no interest group is really happy, because everybody got hit. But you at least feel that the pain has been spread. Now, part of the reason that this county's budget goes down are, one is because the net taxable income phase-in has been frozen for a year at 40% rather than at 60%. I think that costs you $600,000 that you expected, but that you won't get as the budget was introduced. But the fact that you actually have less students this year than last year, and in fact, that your wealth basis went up substantially, while places like Montgomery County's wealth basis went down are causing part of the reduction in your school budget. And that's because everybody is grouped together, and then the formulas are worked out in accordance with the relative wealth of the different jurisdictions. So, part of that loss of funding here is going to occur no matter what else happens. The General Assembly has the right to cut the budget, but does not have the right to increase the budget. So, there will be a lot of negotiating going on with the governor, because if they particularly want to increase something, they're going to have to convince him to come in with a supplemental budget, and they're going to have to show that they can cut money somewhere else to allow that to occur. Of course, one of the big pushes is for the GCEI, Geographic Cost of Education Index. And this county, where the cost of living ostensibly is not as high, does not benefit from that funding anyhow. So, that funding has been cut in half this year, and there's a lot of noise about that and a lot of push to get that back in. But it will not affect this county at all. So, that's what's really happening with the budget. There's a long way to go. And those budget committee people are really smart about all the nuances in the budget. And there will be negotiating going on right till the last few days of the session. They ostensibly pass the budget about a week before, but they don't usually quite make that, and they're, you know, there's some surprises sometimes right up to the last day of the session about getting, about what's going to finally be in the budget. So, I think it's not a disaster situation, but it's something that it's important for us to be working on. The BurFA, which is the, is the bill that comes in with the budget and really kind of adjusts some laws and stuff... some laws and stuff, does indicate, as it came out, it implied that they were going to change the calculation for disparity grants, which this county has shown an enormous interest in. But when I talked to the Legislative Services people about that, they said, "Well, that really was a mistake. That wasn't supposed to be in there." And they think there's going to be a supplemental that, I mean, yeah, an amendment to the budget, to the Burfa that says, "No, no, it goes back to the 2014 level." So this county, and that's a county grant, not a Board of Education grant, but that county grant will probably be less than it was in 2015. But there are bills going in and there are bills being heard. And tomorrow, Dr. Hardings and Mrs. Brightman will be in Annapolis testifying on one of your local bills having to do with superintendent contract. We feel that because this is a local bill and we have spoken with most all of the committee members, it's parallel to things that have happened in two other counties. So the law's already been changed in a similar way for two other counties. It should not be something that the legislature will have a huge problem with. That said, one never knows. And despite the fact that we've met with virtually everybody on the committee, we know that we may have to work hard to get that bill and the other local bills through. We're delighted that there is a new senator, Senator Seraphini, as of yesterday, I think, was sworn in. And so he's moved across from one building, across the street to another building and is in the offices where Senator Schenk used to be. And so, of course, now we will be watching to see who is appointed to take Delegate Seraphini's place. So life is interesting and not static. Just to quickly go over just the concepts that are coming in, in various bills, most of these concepts are things that you feel good, I mean, if we could do them, they'd be great. And it's, you know, they're kind of enhancements, but on the whole, they're very expensive enhancements. For instance, House Bill 44 calls for any IEP for a special ed kid, child, excuse me, that the parents, when that IEP is concluded, the parents could request that it be translated into their native language. Well, in, I forget how many, is it 125 languages that in Montgomery County that they have children speaking? And the cost of translating something that is very technical anyhow and has a lot of very nuanced words in it would be enormously expensive. So although this hasn't could feel, it's something that MAB and, I believe, PASM are taking a position against because of the extreme cost. Similarly, there's a task force to study implementation of dyslexia education program. And again, wouldn't it be great if we can give more special attention to the needs of dyslexic kids? And you are already doing a great deal of that. This task force is now being supported by your organization, but we understand that it could lead to some very expensive mandates. The recommendations are likely to call for some enhancement of your education program that will be costly. Again, a good idea, a caring idea, but not something that's easily incorporated. Another one, House Bill 166, Maryland Seal of Biliteracy Program.
Mrs. Cade, could I interrupt a moment?
Sure.
That Senate Bill 15 that you just discussed on the dyslexia task force, didn't MAB do a hold on that rather than oppose?
No, MAB agreed, I believe, to support it with an amendment that would put MAB, two MAB members...
Two MAB members.
On the task force. And PASM has already asked for a member...
So, support with amendments.
Support with amendments. A Maryland Seal of Biliteracy Program where, that recognizes public high school graduates who have attained proficiency in speaking, reading, and writing in one or more languages in addition to English. Again, you know, it's a nice idea. It's not real costly. I think you could probably do something similar at a local level without having legislation that mandates it. Several bills to adopt regulations that establish general workload guidelines for special education teachers and related service providers. Again, this is your job to establish workload guidelines and so forth. And for the state to say, or for the legislator to say that the state shall, should establish all of this and tell you exactly how it should be done is in opposition to your base principles of, you know, you spend your time knowing your community and doing what's best for your young people. And another similar one, and I'll end in just a minute, House Bill, no, that, oh, another similar one that calls for every truant child to have what would amount to an IEP, an Individualized Re-Engagement Plan, to be developed for each truant student through a truancy action planning and so forth. And various counties have indicated how much this would cost them. Like Comico County, just to pick a somewhat similar sized county, said it would cost, take four more pupil personnel workers, four social workers, and one family services coordinator for a cost of about $700,000 a year to do this. Again, wouldn't it be great if you could enhance every program with a truant child, but should you be told by the state that you must do it and in which, what way you must do it? So that's the tone of the bills that are being heard so far. The education subcommittees in both the House and the Senate are made up of good people, although in the House side, most of the committee members on that subcommittee are new legislators. So again, they don't know all this language and all of these concepts that I'm throwing around as if they were easy to understand English. So it's going to be a very interesting session. It's going to be a very lively session. And I look forward to coming back in February, I mean, in March and telling you what's happening by then.
Very good.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Questions for Mrs. Cade? Just a clarification on the budget, the funding. Is your sense that there's really not going to be new money supplemental that'll more likely be a shifting of priorities in the budget? There'll be some horse trading back and forth to try to get money redeployed to the Geographic Cost of Education Index, which means it'll have to come from somewhere else in the existing budget?
I think we're still kind of feeling our way around on that. I think there's some indication that the March estimates of revenue may be up a bit. And as some legislators feel that the governor has gone too quickly toward getting rid of the structural deficit, that instead of peeling back the bandage, this is Senator Madalena, instead of peeling back the bandage, he has pulled it off. And that some of that, some of the reduction of structural deficit could be handled maybe over a two-year period rather than a one-year. So maybe not making some of the cuts and loosening up some of that money for other purposes. So I think there's still just a really lot of exploration going on among the legislators about where they're going to, where they're going to push and where they're going to find.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you for the report. I'm going to talk more about our day in Annapolis during Board Member comments in a little bit, but while you're here, I wanted to thank you for all you did to make that day a success. I think for all the members who were in Annapolis, had a number of great meetings with a lot of legislators. It was sort of fast and dynamic. I think Mrs. Brightman sent an email out ahead of time that said, "Bring your running shoes," and we certainly needed them. I know I was exhausted by the end of the day and then had to drive home in a snowstorm. But just as an example of, I think, what Ms. Cade brings to the board and some of the opportunities that just happened to pop up, we got back from dinner on, what was it, Tuesday night, I guess?
Wednesday.
Or Wednesday night. And as we were just in the lobby there in the hotel, there's a senator who happens to serve on the Health Committee, or the committee that has jurisdiction over education. And of course, she recognized him. None of the rest of us did. And he walked up and threw his arms around her and said, "Oh, Artis, it's great to see you." And what do you know, we had a conversation with him for probably the next hour, hour and 15 minutes, some really great, interesting ideas, very free-flowing in a non-threatening environment. Seems like he's a fan of Washington County. He knows of what we do. He spoke very highly of the innovative things that we do. He knew about the Barbara Ingram School and our use of alternative financing, lots of things he knew. It was great to be able to put a name with a face. We've invited him to the reception that the chamber's throwing, I guess it's tomorrow evening, to see some of that. But that's just one example of you, you know, you never know where you're going to run into somebody. And if you don't have the right people who know the right people, then you may miss an opportunity. So thank you, Ms. Cade, for everything you did for us last week and all you've done since we left. I know you've had a lot more meetings since then.
Thank you. You're most welcome.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to Board Member Committee Reports. Mrs. Harshman, oh, excuse me, Mr. McCose.
Yes, the County SGA is meeting at February 12th at 9:00 and we're shooting to have it at Tech High.
Tech High? Read that time and date one more time.
February 12th at 9:00.
Any information, any updates you'd like to bring back to us from...
No updates right now.
Okay, very good. Mrs. Harshman?
The CNI Committee was canceled, the meeting on January. So we will be meeting this February on the 24th in the Board Conference Room. We will post the agenda and it will be on our website. So all the public is invited to attend.
Ms. Williams?
The Facilities Committee met on Tuesday, January 27th at noon at 701 Frederick Street. We had an update on the West City Elementary School Project. Tracy Coldsmith had some pictures to show us and we have great things happening there. We have steel in an upright position and pending warmer weather, we'll have more progress. And it appears that everything is on schedule, Dr. Michael checking said back there. So we had that update. We also, Dr. Michael and Rob Rollins informed us of the status of certain bids for Clear Spring High School's health suite improvements, Marshall Street Center classroom improvements, North Hagerstown High School's health suite improvements, Smithburg Elementary's boiler replacement, Tech High's HVAC replacement, and Lincolnshire Elementary's boiler replacement. So we were apprised of where those projects are in terms of bid process. And the highlight, I think, was the tour of the facility. That's the first time that I've been in this, in that particular building in a very long time. I think it was either Juvenile Sales or Safeway. When I was in it last, I didn't have the opportunity to ever be in that building when it housed WCPS staff. I will say that the students in the program there have a beautiful facility. It's really taken shape. They have three lovely classrooms and a large, I guess, multipurpose area and their offices and conference room. And I was just very impressed with the transformation from a Safeway or Juvenile Sales building. The next meeting of the Facilities Committee will be on Tuesday, February 24th. We will be meeting here at noon in Dr. Michael's conference room.
Very good. We'll come back to the day in Annapolis report if you'd like to. Mr. Gesford, Finance?
Sure, I'll have to thank my committee member here who helped me out a little bit.
Do you need more time and you want me to pass on mine?
No, that's okay. We'll be fine. We had our first Finance Committee meeting last month. And we went a few items that we had talked about was the second quarter budget adjustments. Healthcare bid was discussed and, of course, the implementation of the retirement plan changes. One thing that the committee did ask the other committee members to bring back is the Guevaire yearly review of the expenses for energy. Since we've been in the building for a year now, we wanted to take a look at what our savings were for that period of time. I think Justin said there was a, maybe a month that you were in before. You looked at it at a month period and Wayne brought up, you know, it was a very heavy, costly month because of the, I guess, energy and because it was so cold. And now we wanted to kind of look at it from a year standpoint. So we're going to look at that when we come back in February. So that meeting will be February the 24th at 10:45 unless there's some changes, we'll let you know at that time. But thank you, Justin, for helping me out there.
Got your back, my friend.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Fisher, I know you were out of town at the last meeting and you had asked Dr. Hardings to cover, but if you had any comments from Policy?
No, I have no comments other than our next meeting will be the 24th at 9:00 a.m.
Okay. Dr. Hardings?
So to summarize the policy meeting we had on January 27th, we looked at the updating the payroll policy that's mostly putting it into the new policy format as well as eliminating a lot of the things in it that seem to better belong in a regulation than in a policy. We took a look at the state mandate to include a policy on green cleaning products. That's easy to say. We considered, looked at some other counties, what they have done. We decided not to write our own policy on that but rather to update Policy DJ, which is our policy on procurement, and add another section because that policy talks about different types of procurement. We thought we'd add a section that discussed green cleaning products so that we don't have to write a new policy. The General Assembly last year changed the state ethics law to include it now in the General Provisions article of state law. That would require a change to our policy because our policy refers to it being in the old section. So the consensus of the committee was that that's a stylistic change that probably doesn't require a full first reading and second reading. So that's the direction we gave to staff. Finally, in talking about goals for the year coming up, we thought that since the board had reviewed, let me see if I can, I probably can't get there this fast, since we'd gone through the A-section policies, B-section, we've been through the HR policies, we've been through the facilities policies in trying to update and clean up our manual. The biggest section that we haven't addressed yet is Section I, which are the instruction policies. And we thought that might be a good goal for this year, next year and a half to try to get through that and sort of review it the same way we've reviewed the other sections. As the HR Committee reviewed the human resources policies before sending them to the Policy Committee and as the Facilities Committee reviewed the facilities policies before sending them to the Policy Committee for Action, we were going to ask if the Curriculum and Instruction Committee would make the first review of the I-section policies and forward their recommendations to the Policy Committee for Action. So that was a request from the Policy Committee, but of course, the agenda for curriculum and instruction is up to the Chair. Our next meeting, I believe, is still scheduled for the 24th of February.
Thank you. There seemed to be a confusion, Mrs. Harshman?
We had done that with the Curriculum and Instruction Committee. We had combined some and suggested, given suggestions and turned them in, I guess it was last year. So they should be... So, they should be available.
I thought that was staff, as opposed to the CNI Committee, that actually did it.
No, that was, the CNI went over it also.
Why don't we, why don't we look through the minutes and see what CNI might have, if you could let us know when that was, we could go back and see the minutes and see when, see what action the Curriculum Committee took, and we can take it from there.
Good, thank you. Mr. Ridenhour?
Yes.
Human Resources.
The HR Committee met Tuesday, January 27th. It was a short meeting where we were given a draft revision to Policy GCBDA, which is the Family Medical, Family and Medical Leave Act, or Family Medical and Leave Policy. And that will be turned over.
Mr. Ridenhour, could you get?
That will be turned over at some point to the, to the Policy Committee.
All right, and Mrs. Williams, did you, any MAB report?
Yes, Mrs. Cade did such a fabulous job of reporting, there's just very little left for me to say. She does such a stellar job. The MAB Legislative Committee met in an abbreviated meeting from 10:00 to 11:00 on the 29th, when we were all in, in Annapolis. And mention was made of Senate Bill 15, which is the, the bill to establish a task force to study the implementation of a dyslexia program. And it was voted by the committee to support that particular bill with amendments, and the amendment being that two MAB members serve on the task force. Mrs. Cade also mentioned House Bill 44, that's the special education bill that involves translating the IEPs into a native language. And the decision was made to oppose that as an unfunded mandate. And we reviewed positions on many bills, including budget bills, and note was made of what happens with regard to MAB taking a position on local bills. There were three local bills mentioned, one was ours, the reappointment of the Superintendent of Schools, that's Senate Bill 71. Another was Senate Bill 123, which is Baltimore County's bill with regard to public high schools and the adoption of their school schedule. And another one from Baltimore County, which is Senate Bill 27, Baltimore Public Schools' revocation of magnet status. So, MAB's position is that unless they are asked by the local, they take no position. And it was reported that no local had asked MAB to take a position on any of these three bills, and so, that's where we stand with that. There's another legislative committee meeting coming up on the 9th that I'm not going to be able to attend, but I know that Mrs. Cade will be there and President Brightman, so I'm sure they'll come back with.
Loads of fun.
Loads of news, because things are happening in Annapolis.
Things have started out rather slowly, but I think they're gonna pick up. So, Legislative Response Team, Dr. Hardings, would you like to take a lead on that?
Yes, I'll be glad to. We've been very busy the last couple of weeks. I think I forwarded, as promised, to all of my colleagues, the copy of Senate Bill 71, which did get dropped in the Senate, I think, the day after our meeting a couple of weeks ago. The, the House version was heard by the delegation a week ago tomorrow, and the delegation supported that bill, and I believe they filed it late last week. So, it now has been introduced in the House and the Senate. I'm not gonna be able to recall the House bill, it's 131 or something around that number. So, those are both moving forward. As Ms. Cade indicated, there is a hearing on Senate Bill 71 tomorrow in the Senate, which Mrs. Brightman and I are both signed up to testify regarding. Anybody, of course, is welcome to come. I don't believe that we have taken a position on any other bills. Since then, there have been some that have come across our desk, but none that we've, we've taken a position on. So, wanted to be sure to report that out. While we were in Annapolis, of course, we had dinner with the delegation on, I guess it would have been last Wednesday, as I indicated, mostly just, in fact, exclusively just discussed the three legislative initiatives that the board has adopted. That's the Superintendent Contract Bill, the Alternative, there are the Alternate Certification Bill, and the Alternate Financing Bill. We, the next day, met with a number of legislators, just going through the list, we met with Senator Pinsky, Senator Rozeppep, Senator Bates, Delegate Ann Kaiser, who's the Majority Leader in the House. We met with Joe Getty, who is the Governor's Legislative Director. And we had a very nice meeting with Nancy Kopp, who was one of the original ones who actually got us a year or two ago to think about alternate financing for school facilities and alternate ways to raise funds. It ended with a quick run home in a snowstorm, or at least a sleet storm, and I'm glad to see we all made it back, made it back safely. Tomorrow, as I said, Mrs. Brightman and I will be in Annapolis testifying on that bill. That's also the chamber's reception tomorrow evening at 4:00 in the Calvert House. Anybody's welcome to attend. I know we'll have a number of students there demonstrating the innovative, creative things that we do, and showing the great programs we have in Washington County that engage kids. So, if I've left anything out, pick it up from there.
Good summary.
Mrs. Brightman?
Appreciate it, thank you very much. I, I will just say, I thought it was an excellent day in Annapolis for Washington County. I will add that it seemed like everywhere we went, certainly, Mrs. Cade opened a lot of those doors for us with her history and knowledge of the, of the system and the process. But everyone seemed to know Washington County ahead of us. They always said, "Well, you're the ones doing this, and you're the ones doing that", and how innovative. And Dr. Wilcox was recognized as he should be, as, as an innovator. And it was just, it was gratifying. I think the meeting with Joe Getty and Kiefer Mitchell was particularly productive. They liked a lot of the initiatives, all three of them were very open and very interested in those, and, and asked us to keep them updated on the progress. So, a lot of good networking going on. Mrs. Harshman, any MAB from any of your committee meetings, reports?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Under miscellaneous business, going on to future agenda items, the agenda meeting did not take place today. I'm not sure if it's gonna happen afterwards, it really depends on how long the joint meeting goes. But at this point, there's really nothing new to add that above what all of you are aware of, other than, of course, we will be adding the school naming action item probably on February 17th, so keep an eye open for that one. Also, just something to be prepared for on the next meeting, and I discussed this with Dr. Wilcox yesterday, I'd like to propose an ad hoc committee to set up a communication plan, both internally and externally. I, I think there's an opportunity to make recommendations, some of them may be policies, some may be best practice, some may be guidelines, but a way to help all of us communicate internally among ourselves in a productive way, and also to maybe have a better process in place where parents, employees approach us from outside, so that we have an understanding and trust that information is being shared in a symmetrical way and in a timely manner. So, I did speak to Mrs. Fisher and asked if she would consider chairing the ad hoc committee. I will be developing a charge, and we'll bring that forward for everyone's consideration at our next meeting, and for full discussion at that time. And I would also like to suggest that Mrs. Harshman and Mrs. Williams consider serving on that communication ad hoc. Mrs. Harshman, I know communications has been a, an issue of yours for some time, so I thought you could make a valuable contribution to the ad hoc committee. So, if everyone will just consider that and think about it, if you have any questions prior to that meeting, but I'm, I'm pretty sure we're gonna get that on the agenda. All right, Board Member Comments. We'll start back again. Mr. McHose, anything to add?
No, I have nothing to add.
Okay, Mrs. Harshman?
No, nothing.
Mrs. Williams?
I'd just like to say that I had the opportunity to attend Western Heights Art Team's production, Don't Stop Believin' in the Arts, Saturday evening. There were two shows, and I was at the second show, the 7:00 show. I understand that the standing room only for both. I was just so very impressed by the energy, the enthusiasm, and the talent of, of the students, and even staff performed. So, it was, it was a very nice evening, and I'd like to thank the principal there, Mike Cahannick, for extending the invitation, and I look forward to going to see Annie Junior there in the spring.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Gessford, any Board Member comments?
Nothing.
Okay, Mrs. Fisher?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Just to reiterate or go, to add to Mrs. Williams' comments, I attended that same program, and it was very impressive. What was most impressive to me were, were the number of students that were involved. Probably well over 100 children were involved in one way or another in that particular program, starting from the MCs down to dancers, who were dancing in the aisles as well as the stage. Plus, it was very encouraging to see that many parents and community members in attendance. The, the auditorium was filled, people were slipping in and out as they could to get in and check it out, in my understanding was, the afternoon performance, or the earlier performance, was equally well intended, attended. There was also an opportunity, if you had a chance, you could see one student who was doing caricatures right in the hallway. There was a, a project that one of the art classes had done, which I thought was very impressive, which was the, each student did a section of Starry Night by Van Gogh, and then put it together, and, and it was very, very well done. There was some incredible talent in that school that probably people didn't realize was there. And taking the time to put together that type of presentation showed the community what is happening there artistically, and those art talents also, you know, manifest themselves and improved academic performance. So, very well done on the part of Mr. Cahannick and, and his staff, and they are to be commended for a really, really impressive performance.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Dr. Hardings?
Yes, I, three items. First, I too attended the Education Summit last week at, it was sponsored by the Greater Hagerstown Committee. I too want to thank them for all they do, for all their Education Committee does to promote education in Washington County, and try to make sure that we are always having the conversation about what more we can do for our students. Second, I want to again thank the team at Fountaindale for the invitation and the opportunity to visit and see their instruction and their, their use of technology. Particularly enjoyed spending time with Mrs. Dodd, she was a Assistant Principal at Boonsborough while my kids were students at Boonsborough. It's great to see, we, we talk a lot about growing our own, but it's, and I think she's a great example of a principal who has gone from an Assistant Principal in sort of a large school to a principal at a larger school, to really now one of the community's leaders, or at least, it appeared to me, one of our, our leaders at the elementary level in, in technology and integrating technology and, and creative instruction for kids. So, congratulations to her and the staff at Fountaindale. I appreciated the hospitality and the chance to see what they're doing. Finally, I attended the ribbon cutting at the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Literary Arts Program, which was in the Grand Building downtown. Thanks to the staff for creating a home for those students. I know they've been sort of playing catch as catch can where it comes to instruction, but you could tell from the students when you were there that they felt like they belonged to something now that they have a place to call home. So, thanks to the staff for making that happen. I'm, I'm always excited when you see kids who are really excited about what they're doing, and you couldn't help but be in that room with not only kids who are excited, but all the adults, the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Foundation members, school board members, just community leaders who sort of gave a collective hug to all those kids in encouraging them in their studies. So, thanks to all who are involved, and thanks to all the staff who, again, are doing whatever they can in creative ways to try to accommodate the space needs that we have downtown. As I was at the event, and I think Mrs. Brightman said this at the time, as did Dr. Wilcox, nothing illustrates to me more why we need to find a solution for classroom space downtown than that. If we have students in four or five different buildings at any given time, that's a big challenge. And whether the solution is the hub or it's something else, I think that that's one of the, one of the things that we as a board are gonna have to address in the near future. I won't go on with any more commentary and pass it back to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I have just one additional item that I believe has not been touched on yet this afternoon. And I did meet with Delegate McKay yesterday morning, Mrs. Harshman and Mr. Gessford joined us. There was an opportunity to bring the delegate up to speed, he was unable to join us in Annapolis on Wednesday evening at the delegation dinner. So, it was, again, I think, a very productive, engaged conversation about our legislative priorities. He is the newest member of the delegation, so it helped him understand how our Legislative Response Team works, and the, the history behind our initiatives, that we were being responsive to a request from then-Delegate Seraphini as Chair of the delegation to develop some innovative, creative initiatives that they, as a delegation, and we could partner on and take forward to Annapolis, which is what we did. So, I, I thought it was a very productive conversation, and I appreciate Mr. Gessford and Mrs. Harshman being there to add their perspective. I'm sorry, Mrs. Harshman?
I just, and this doesn't have anything to do with that, but I would be negligent not to, not to respond to, the Arts Council right now has a fantastic exhibit. It is the teachers, the art teachers of Washington County. And it is wonderful. So, please, whatever you can do, get down to see it, because I think you will be amazed. That's where probably many of our creative children get some of their inspiration. Our teachers do a fantastic job.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that with us. Any other comments? Dr. Wilcox?
None.
Okay, we have come to the end of our agenda, and we have a half an hour ahead. How about that? This is great. We will meet in this room at 3:30 with our joint meeting with the Commissioners. We are adjourned.